Morning, it's nine o'clock. It's the time that was noticed and posted for we're in the board supervisor's conference through Melody Lane District. Hey Adam, on this agenda is open for discussion. We begin with the roll call. District one.
Crosby is here.
District two supervisor English is present. District three. Uh, we think that Ms. Judd is on her way, so we'll let you know when she arrives. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh two, six oh nine, seven five one three, or eight eight eight, six eight zero, six seven one four. Conference ID three six nine, four seven six, three three two pounds. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero, four three two, nine two zero zero for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with board supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. Uh, as always in work sessions, the introductions uh should be made before you speak so that the record can be complete. Uh, items for discussion today are uh the budget and the budget specifically for the sheriff's department. Mr. Karwachka, you want to lead off?
Yes, so we've been in discussions with the sheriff's office uh this entire past fiscal year. And our but new budget manager, Juan Frisbee. Uh, and so we have been in discussions to put together this presentation, and I believe the first person to start the presentation is Sheriff Adams.
Well, good morning, everybody, uh, Madam Chair, board members, and all the staff, and thank you. I apologize for my lack of attendance today. Unfortunately, I'm in Texas, feet with sheriffs and border patrol. Uh, where there's some issues on our southwest border, as you all know about. So, uh, again, we worked hard to put this uh budget together. Again, our priority will, as it has been since I've been sheriff for the last eleven years, has been the uh retention recruitment of our talent, the men and women that work at the sheriff's office all the way through. And I want to thank the board for their support of that over the years, and uh we're uh we're doing very well. Uh, we want to continue on that pace so we don't lose the talent. It's a competitive market out there in law enforcement right now, as we all know. So again, but we're staying pace, and that's most important. So, uh, I'm going to yield to uh Chief Tom Malinen, who's going to do the presentations, as I'm absent today. But I'll be here for any questions at the end. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Sheriff. Supervisor Crosby and Chair English, uh, our challenge is obviously is the border crisis down there. We're running anywhere between uh seems like uh right now about six thousand. We've had some highs up to ten thousand. Rule of law challenges seems to be uh increasing where people just don't want to obey the law. And when we uh, we've had quite a few people that, when they hold up in their houses and refuse to come out, it takes us quite a while uh when we're resting them to get the warrants and everything else and and retrieve them for their crimes that they committed. Uh, we're always looking at recruiting qualified applicants, and that's one of the, one of the things that we really look at. And we're looking also obviously at our market competitiveness, competitiveness, uh, reference retention of our existing staff and our qualified staff. As we all know, we've had some historic uh inflation rates. Seems like nine to twelve percent for necessities, and anywhere from twenty to forty percent in our other areas. If you want to buy horse feed now, it's, it's really, it's gone up tremendously. Our accomplishments in major crimes, uh, they were pretty steady throughout the year. Our three homicides that we had this year was a father and son ruckus. We had two motorcycle people uh engaging recklessly on the roadway, and and one died uh due to that death. And uh, we had that uh situation over desert RV where that shooter went and started shooting up the place. And unfortunately, yeah, killed a person there. Uh, street crimes is very busy on the narcotic side and dangerous drug side, most likely due to fentanyl increases and in the month that's coming across the border. They're very busy, and as you can see, their drug arrests for misdemeanors and felonies are are really up. Uh, fentanyl is not going away. It's cheap, and it's going to be in our backyard for some time. Community outreach and the COVID is beginning to step up their their activities. Now, quite a few uh employment backgrounds. One of the good things uh is that when we're looking for uh and applicants uh for the sheriff's office, we seem to be able to draw uh a good crowd to come in, begin testing process. We're very fortunate on that that aspect. Search and rescue was pretty much uh same across the board, a lot of training missions. There's short hauls and uh hoist rescues went up a little bit this year to seventeen. And uh this year, they ended up with twenty-two UDA missions up in the mountains. Animal control calls were down. I'm thinking that was probably due to COVID. When people were home and and living in their neighborhoods, they're seeing various animal activities and calling it in to the sheriff's office. Now, people are going back to work and and uh their their call load has has slowed down. Patrol activity is pretty much the same across the board uh with calls for service over about thirty-six thousand. Uh, sixteen hundred arrests, eighteen hundred citations. Warnings went down, but their traffic stops uh with all the border activities vastly increased. About threefold uh to a little over ninety-seven hundred. Accidents uh have, for some reason, uh increased this year or last year. And uh, and I saw that number, I'm going to get with uh our traffic guys and try to figure out what what was the cause of that. And of course, our UDA activities for the last year doubled. The criminal interdiction team, which is uh funded uh through the state, they ended up doing over thirteen hundred human smuggling events. Uh, eight hundred and eighty-two human smugglers were investigated. Uh, detained eighty-nine human smugglers, arrested two hundred and thirty-two smugglers. They seized forty weapons and over three thousand uh undocumented aliens were turned over to border patrol or whatever their their handling purposes. In detention, over thirty-five hundred bookings, twenty-one hundred, over twenty-one hundred in felony, eighteen hundred plus in misdemeanors. Uh, that border felonies accounted to twelve hundred and fifty-three uh border misdemeanor bookings, three hundred and twenty-five. And border crime transports, uh, eight hundred and forty-three. I'm assuming those are the transports of the jail guys now moving these people back and forth in court. Uh, thirty-five juveniles were booked, and our incarceration costs came down to a little over uh, well, over four million dollars. But we're being reimbursed on the twenty-one money that uh agreement that we have in uh that runs out in years' future. But we've asked for extensions on that money at this point. Hopefully, we can work that out with them. Fabers uh crews have got nine hundred Buckeye cameras along the border now going from uh New Mexico all the way to California. And uh, from twenty seventeen to date, they had over one hundred forty thousand undocumented aliens. You know, that uh roughly forty-eight thousand have been uh apprehended. The drug smugglers, they witnessed four hundred and forty-two. And the marijuana appears to be the same. The meth is increasing. Yeah, I guess uh it's just coming up along with the fentanyl. And fentanyl now is being weighed uh in pounds to try to determine how many tablets. I noticed that was uh from DEA the other day. They got some formula, Determinaf. And uh cocaine, a little bit of cocaine there, eight point seven pounds. Uh, for twenty twenty, our cameras ended up picking up uh over uh sixty thousand uh undocumented aliens. And over twenty-five thousand were apprehended and turned over to border patrol or board patrol apprehensions based on our efforts. And three uh drug mules, yeah, were apprehended. The days of us seeing uh marijuana uh bundles uh with the smugglers has has been reduced. However, at times, it seems to be picking up again a little bit. It's it's more fentanyl and meth and in those drugs that are uh being uh found off smuggling people at that when we can talk, when they're captured. This year, in in funding based on uh Arizona legislators for the bond, for the border funding, we ended up uh getting really close to thirty-eight million dollars in assets. And that represents, as you can see on on uh the slide, uh vehicles, saber equipment, and personnel. Uh, we're doing the radio integration with the state. The human system is the state net system, and we'll be integrating that. And that's going to give us seamless communications along the southern border. And eventually, as we build that corridor going up through the center of the state and northern Arizona, it will end up becoming part of the state system. Um, dispatch councils for Douglas so that uh they can connect into CCOM. Uh, helicopter operations, uh, we're just pending uh the final funding from the state, and then a helicopter will be purchased and we'll move forward with that. And uh, we were able to get uh six million dollars for next gen radios. And we've worked it out that uh we'll be dispersing uh those radios to law enforcement and fire. So all the fire districts are going to be able to uh talk directly to CCOM on the seven hundred system and any other officer out there. So we're working through that. Additional funding is uh from the DPS Strike Force money. We ended up getting to five million dollars for the Combined Intelligence and Operations Center. And and the purchasing of the building is complete, or is it still pending?
It's still pending.
Still pending.
So the the board of the last agenda item signed the the contracts. It went to escrow right now. So still is going to take a, I think, about two or three more months before we see anything.
Okay. That's a, that's a good asset to have, and it's a good building that was identified. Uh, the Legacy Foundation, uh, through the efforts of Commander Watkins, uh, we ended up getting over a million dollars um to develop uh Cochise County Mental Health Support Team. And yeah, it's in a working phase. There's a lot of uh of the moving parts have have been accomplished. And uh, we're looking forward to having those people in the field to help us with Title Thirty-Six issues, uh, which they seem to be increasing for some reason. But it should really help us out in dealing with uh a lot of the mental health issues we have in the field there. Uh, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, she.
Thank you.
Is she going to be doing any training with the staff?
Yes.
I mean, the patrol people, the the ones that are out there?
Yes, ma'am. She's uh been focused on hiring people as well as trying to get in some free training in. But yes, we are going to train not just Cochise County Sheriff's deputies, but all law enforcement officers in Cochise County on crisis intervention techniques.
Well, it needs to be continuous, you know, because it's like anything else in education. You can't give it a one shot and expect those patrolmen to remember. So I'm I'm glad that you have someone in charge of that.
Yes, we we need.
Mr. Watkins, uh, what is the number of hires and what are their qualifications?
I guess supervisor, so far, we have hired one doctor, Dr. Alana Rodasini, uh, to oversee the program. And then we have, uh, we are in the finalizing process of hiring another licensed behavioral health professional. And then I think we've identified one additional uh behavioral health paraprofessional. Uh, we've teamed up with the college so that we could hire somebody that doesn't have license, because we haven't been able, to your credit, Madam Chair, finding licensed uh licensed behavioral health professionals have been extremely hard. So we're working with the Legacy Foundation to kind of drop some of those requirements and hire some more people. So we should be onboarding two staff on the seventeen.
What kind of doctor is your doctor?
She has a doctorate. Put me on the spot supervisor. Uh, she has a, I think it's a side E, but don't hold me to that. I do know she's licensed behavioral health professional through the state of Arizona. She has a doctorate, and she also taught at Arizona State University. So she's very highly qualified. Thank you.
The record showed that supervisor judge is present.
And I I've been on this too since that fact, the doctor.
We didn't know that, so I want to make sure the record was clear. Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, an additional funding item is Arizona Attorney General gave us uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for uh prevention of opiate, uh, drug-related offenses for uh enforcement and education. So we're 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 moving forward on on that. It's it's, that money's going to really help us out. It's just very nice. Funding requests, uh, of course, we're always going to ask for raises. And uh, uh, based on, you know, the inflation. And we did our our market study and we we did our market study, and I was glad that Pete Campbell uh was uh happy with it. He made a comment that John GiCompo worked through the numbers, and he said, it was a good study, and that's that's nice to hear. We're always want to keep our salaries close to our competitors, but uh, we know the realistic things uh in life that, you know, we are a small county and and, you know, we we want to keep them close. But uh, I know that uh we're always going to be a little bit behind the curve. Looking at uh this year's uh market study, I ran the numbers. And I think we came, on the average, we were at what people in these other agencies are actually making. We we are just about any about ten percent below on the average uh on that. Uh, we're putting in a request at uh five percent increase in compensation. And that total request comes down to eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars and some change. We do have detention money, border security detention money, that uh Juan uh indicates that we can use in that. So basically, in general fund, we're asking for six hundred and sixty-one thousand and four hundred and two dollars on that for compensation. The next issue that we're dealing with is the body camera request. Our five-year uh camera, body camera in TASER contract ends in March twenty twenty. Uh, we're currently paying a hundred and fifteen thousand per year on that five-year contract. And uh, in talking with ACHM, they came up and they said, wow, your new contract prices are two hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And I felt, um, well, I fell out of my chair, and Selena had to pick me up. And and we had a discussion on that. And I talked with our body camera TASER experts uh in the agency or in our agency. And I says, this number is 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 extremely high. Yeah, and this is an extremely high increase. They gave me the representative. I made a phone call to him, and right away, he dropped a hundred thousand. I'm sorry, two hundred thousand off it. And um, I still said, you know, we we need to, we need to really have further discussions on this because that's that's expensive for a county of our size, for our population base, and for what our actual budgets are. When Selena ran the numbers, uh, taking uh a hundred and fifteen thousand that we would project to pay for the, let's say, in the next five years, it looks like we're looking at an increase of a hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars per year. And over that five-year period, that looks like about three-quarters of a million-dollar increase. We have discussed it, and when I talked with their representative, I said, we need to have more discussions on this. And and we need to look and see how to uh bring that cost factor down. Body cameras are pretty much essential nowadays. It's, I don't know how many times somebody has called up, we look at the body cameras, and we have that proof that uh that's not what occurred. This is what occurred. I'm sorry. And a lot of times, they simply just, well, they back down at that point. And if you're caught on camera, the camera doesn't lie.
Madam Chair. So do you have, does everyone have their own personal body camera TASER, or do they check it out when they go on duty?
They they have their personal.
Okay.
When with the the large, or the vastness of the county in this, in the shifts and everything, as soon as they climb in their uh patrol car, they're on duty. It's it's special operations. We're looking at increasing to major crimes detectives for when they go to the crime scenes that for them to have body cameras. And of course, all the patrol guys. I don't wear a body camera. The the command staff doesn't wear body cameras. The sheriff probably should. I mean, he stops as he makes. I don't know if he heard that or not, but.
I heard you, Tom. I heard you.
I just wondered if that if that could save, if if there was an operations center that they left out of. I know Border Patrol does like a checkout of things, but that's.
Check out vehicles too.
Yeah, they check out everything. I think they check out guns.
Well, it it's something that needs, we need to be aware, but we're not done with fight. And uh, um, when it comes to fighting with people in full immunity, I don't mind doing that. So we're we'll, I think there's some things we can do. Look, look at the TASERS and body cameras. I don't think there's much we can do based on the the service that they give us and based on uh cloud uh servers and in storage and everything. But I think on the TASER side, I think we need to definitely go go to battle on that. Let's see what we can get done. Training, we're asking for a fifteen thousand dollar increase in training budget. We're always seem to be falling short in there. We look at, you know, training reduces your liability issues. And during the COVID era, and all we were doing is concentrating as getting our our uh instructors recertified as for post Arizona post requirements. And what we want to do is, we need to start uh looking at our investigations in mental health and outreach services, beginning to get back in the in getting some enhanced training in those areas. So we're asking for fifteen thousand in there on that. Extradition, if county attorney determines who gets extradited to be uh brought back to Cochise County for the crimes they committed in Cochise County. And they they really do a do a good job. But uh, it's the sheriff's uh office job to physically and financially determine how to get them back to Cochise County. Uh, it seems like quite often I I hear in Carol Campus uh coordinates a lot of those efforts. And usually, she's pounding on my door uh saying, we got another extradition, and this person's in Idaho. Okay, well, Carol, what's what's that costing us? It's going to be a six thousand dollar transport. I said, why so much? Our, the transport companies that are out there now that are professionals and that, and some of these transport companies, the county has used three years. In the old days, they take their van out, they load them up, they run a course of action. Come from Idaho, go go whatever, through Montana, they're going to Phoenix, and then we may be the last stop. And they'll have a half a dozen people in their transport van. Now, uh, it seems like they're having these small charter planes. They load them up and and they drag, fly them back and give them to us. When we can, we use our our own detention staff, and we weigh that. What what's the cost for them going out there as opposed to using a professional transport company? And uh, quite often now, if we could, if we can get into Texas, New Mexico, Colorado and and California, where these guys are, we'll make that run. But it's it's, yeah, I think it's just difficult sometimes to to uh get that all handled. And we're asking for a twenty thousand dollar increase. So Selena has threatened me that we are out of budget money on that. And she's looking at other places to strip out if within her budget to to compensate for that. So um, we're still concerned about that, and that's why we're asking for the twenty thousand dollars in that area, see if we can beef that up. Uh, animal shelter services, uh, you know, we still have City of Douglas, City of Wilcox out there. Uh, excuse my misspelling there. And uh, Humane Society is out there in Arizona. Uh, Selena ran a really nice uh flow chart and projections, and it looks like uh an increase of about eight point six percent. And we're requesting uh uh for the coming year to have thirteen thousand and eight hundred and two dollars added to that budget line, where we'll have a shortfall in there. So um, what we're currently, when we're looking at all these various compensation, cameras, training, extradition, professional services, come to uh right close to one point five million dollars. Yeah, increase in our current budget that we're submitting. We work every month with Juan and and the county manager and in sharing uh on our budget projections and in in everything. Juan has indicated that he, we look pretty good shape except with uh one of our areas is is uh right in our investigation sides. It seems like uh we will adjust our funding internally. But uh, part of investigations this year, they seem to be lengthy and long investigations. But uh, we're moving forward on that aspect. But I think the biggest thing is when we meet monthly and and talk about budgets. I know where I'm at in in every day, Selena and her cohort AJ, you're generally pounding on my door with something that they're they're concerned about, budget.
Good question, Madam Chair. The seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, almost seven hundred and seventy-four. That is a five, is that a five-year contract?
Yeah.
So that's this time, but the next four years are going very forward. That's in this budget, but it's not that much every year, is it?
It it was initially at at uh a hundred and fifteen thousand, and it went up to yeah, two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
But that's two hundred and eighty-four per year.
Yeah.
So we're paying a five-year.
So the projected increase, if the projected increase, I don't see the slide, came, the actual projected increase supervisor judge came down to how much?
But but next year, we're getting seven seventy-three this year, but next year, we won't have that cost. All the other. All the other costs, yeah, all the other costs here look like they're gonna go forward, but seven-seventy-three, eight-forty-five is just for this, for this five-year period, and it's gonna happen this year, but not next year.
Well, we would pay one-fifty-four each year.
Okay.
Over the time, so that'd be annually, so it would be committing the funds for five years.
Okay. So it is, it is, and then there'll be a new contract coming up. All right, so actually, the increase this year wouldn't, wouldn't be the whole two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand. It would be one-fifty-four projected for five years.
Yeah, the, the contract ends in March of twenty-twenty.
It just, the numbers just aren't working for me, because I think we're either gonna look at the things that are gonna go forward every year, which would be one-fifty-four, or the things that we're spending right now.
But when you, when you sign that five-year contract, you're obligated, so we're obligating those funds. I think that's where.
But next year, it won't show one-fifty-four, they won't increase one-fifty-four next year. It, it's either gonna show, it's okay, everyone else understands it this way. But, um, we're obligating the funds, but not spending them this year. We're spending one-fifty-four every year. So that might, could say one-fifty-four, and then I would understand it better. So. Because otherwise, it's gonna show up next year as one-fifty-four, and we're gonna be like, no, we already obligated that.
Right, we, we have until March of twenty-twenty-four to really negotiate.
Yeah, we know you're gonna negotiate, it's just that everything I see here is going forward, except for seven-seventy-three, eight-forty-five. That's only one-fifty-four this year, one-fifty-four next year, one-fifty-four in a, for five years.
Correct.
So one of these things is not like the other, that's all I'm saying. I don't know if anyone else sees that, I'm gonna stop talking now.
No, and I think the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way to, to present this is to say, we have a five-year contract. Once we sign the five-year contract, here's the total. So we, they're not gonna come up every year to say, we needed an additional hundred-and-fifty-four thousand.
So that's not gonna show up in our future budgets, it's just this one time.
Well, if you, you agree to commit those funds, and then over the years, it's paid off. But next year, they don't, if the board agrees and approves this request of seven-seventy-three.
Won't show us a new budget request.
A new budget request.
It won't show us a new budget request, because we've already approved it.
Okay. There won't be a new increase, it'll, it'll always stay that way. But when I'm thinking, I need to know that if we spend six-sixty-one on compensation increase, that's gonna happen every year, six-sixty-one.
That's year after year.
Um, fifteen thousand for training, that's year after year after year, that's an increase. Seven-seventy-three, that's not year after year after year. So I'm just taking that seven-seventy-three out and changing it to one-fifty-four in my head. So it is like the others. One of these things wasn't like the others, guys. Okay, I'm good.
I, I think, uh, I really enjoy working with Juan and, and, uh, working on the budget process. Like I say, Selena's usually my doorway once a day. Beat me up about something, but I think, I think we've, uh, have come a long way in our partnerships with county administrators, with board, and with finance, in working through our issues. We're asking for approval on our budget, and we believe it's reasonable, and we, we think it fits forward, Cochise County.
And similar items, Mr. Lina, I was wondering if you, and I don't expect you to have exact statistics, what, what do you expect your, your hires from other agencies versus new, non-post-certified hires?
Bob, do you know our laterals, how many, uh, we're picking up now?
Chief, we have one in the five, and then we, we have approximately, we hire approximately.
Quiet, whoever's online.
Yes, supervisor, we, we hire approximately one to five levels every year.
Okay, the rest are recruits. And, and what, how many recruits, I'm just.
Definitely, it, it, it varies, supervisor. Last year, uh, for the, we're seeking two academies, we had almost nine, right around, I don't give or take two, um, nine, uh, CCS recruits, and then we hired three latter. And I can give you the precise numbers over what specific timeframe, but we generally hire right around ten to fifteen employees per year. One to five of those are generally laterals.
Okay, that's good news, I think. Um, I think this is about page six, accomplishments criminal interdiction team. I'm looking at, uh, the, uh, the statistics for detained eighty-nine, arrested two-hundred-and-thirty-two, and I'm wondering what the difference is between detained and arrested, if you could, uh, tell me about the statistics a little bit.
The, the take, it's my understanding that the detained supervisor brought the. You wanna speak on it?
You can chime in, but.
Yeah. So, uh, I can't read his writing, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to bore you in there, but. Two-hundred-and-thirty-two of those smugglers were arrested for felony yield. Um, they're, those are the people that did not stop for law enforcement. The eighty-nine are juvenile, um, detainees that were processed or smuggling.
So, so it sounds like, uh, the eighty-nine, the primary difference is that they're juveniles.
Yeah, they are juveniles, yes.
Okay. Uh, now I'm gonna go to about page eight or nine, and I'll show you what that one looks like. It's, it's accomplishments, it starts out with Sabre.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm wondering what the, the difference is between the, uh, the blue box in the bottom and the upper part. I'm thinking the, the blue box is non-Sabre's. But I, there you go.
Yeah. Uh, that would be, that would be, uh, no, actually, those are, uh, from the cameras. Blue box are the number of undocumented sightings that they had across the camera system for twenty-twenty.
Okay, for twenty-twenty, uh, for twenty-twenty-two, okay, so it looks like it differs a little bit from the, uh, the, uh, undocumented aliens, one thirty-nine thousand, and undocumented aliens.
Two thousand seventeen to present.
Yeah, that, that was from present, and that is reflective that in twenty-twenty-two, thank you, that, uh, this year we're, we're seeing like a double increase, yeah, major, with just our camera systems.
So from, uh, twenty-seventeen to present, just by going by that one thirty-nine and forty-eight thousand, there's roughly ninety thousand getaways during that period of time.
Yes.
Just to clarify that, they're, they're way up in the hills, right, there's some of these cameras?
The, the cameras go, um, all along the border, and starting in New Mexico all the way to California border.
But when you see somebody on a camera, you have to figure out where they're gonna come out, and go up and meet them where they're.
That is correct, that. If, if we're, if, in the old days, when we were definitely identifying drug smuggling, dealing with the marijuana pack or bundles and things of that nature, our guys were very active, uh, in assisting Border Patrol in the apprehension. A lot of these apprehensions are simply turned over to Board Patrol. They, they know, uh, uh, where to, uh, work their threads to, to do their apprehensions.
Mr. Lina, did you just say that, uh, this goes to the California border?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the whole Arizona border, not just this county?
Yes.
Okay.
Where in like Santa Cruz County and Pima County, those cameras, then, uh, even though we do the, the sighting, Border Patrol will do the setup of the cameras. They're taught how, you know, they'll do where they know that their smuggling routes are.
Okay.
Yeah.
How, what's the rationale be, behind pooling all the, uh, the border counties? And presenting them as, as statistics? Since it doesn't, it, it isn't, it isn't limited to our county, I'm just curious about that.
That's a good question. Okay, we can, we can definitely look at that, that's interesting.
Why are body cameras and tasers paired, what's the rationale behind that? It just happens to be, uh, a service that this company provides, and it just happens to have both items.
That is, that is correct, Acxiom probably unfortunately is leader in, in body cameras and tasers. Their, their innovation, their technology is, and they're always coming out with obviously new products and better enhancements.
Okay. Would you care to tell me your personnel levels, uh, at this meeting, or would you rather tell me at another time?
At, the, with, with cameras and taser.
No, number of deputies, number of volunteers, number of staff. But I don't insist that it be disclosed to.
As an accurate count, uh, I think off the top of my head, we're looking at probably about ninety deputies, but I'd have to get an accurate count, is that about correct?
Yeah.
We're running and volunteers, uh, search and rescue usually runs, uh, thirty to forty, but they have a core, uh, a real core group of twenty that I've seen many times in the field. And then, uh, SAT is running right about forty volunteers out there. In jail, how many in jails?
There's probably about, close to seventy, sixty, seventy.
Sixty, seventy.
Seventy DOs.
DOs.
And the rest of staff.
Or, and the sheriff.
Admin.
And admin, there's really one?
No, admin kind of counts you guys as well, I mean, it's been considered smart.
Okay. Sorry, can you please?
Admin's probably close to twenty.
Twenty.
Uh, how about, uh, Mr. Deshaun and his emergency services guy, and I don't expect you, nobody does.
No.
We can get you more concrete numbers.
That's fine, that's close enough. Anybody wanna talk about the animal facility in Wetstone? And the potential of that facility versus whatever else is, uh, going on as, as it relates to budget? Because the proponents recommend that facility as, at least in interim.
The, when our ACOs, I, I know this is not gonna be popular, but when our ACO staff went out there, that is a boarding facility. When I was checking into their hours, they're open like six to eight or nine in the morning, shut down, no traffic during the day, then they're open in the evening. Obviously, drop-off boarding, pickup boarding. The facility is old, and it's, it needs a lot of repairs. It's not designed to be, uh, an animal shelter. And it's, I, I, I know that everyone has concerns, and, and I love animals. All my animals have been, uh, horses over the years, people that can't afford them, they get basically rescued by my wife. And, and I probably have five horses buried out of my property, out in Wetstone. My cats have all been feral cats that showed up the house and, and ended up staying, and I got a current one in the barn now, trying to figure out what to do with that one. My dogs have all been, uh, I found a dog on, along the roadside in Mexico, and it was, didn't weigh five pounds, I, I just dumped out there, I picked that up. I understand when we, I was very, when I was with Service Police Department, I really was over that animal control operation on and off for probably the better part of my career there, uh, probably about twenty-five years. It seemed to come in my bellywhack. We had that old shelter down there, and when Nancy J Brewer left that, uh, money at one-point-five mil on that, uh, it was time to build a new shelter. And building that shelter out there, I spent a lot of time, um, uh, looking at other shelters throughout the state and what have you. And, and I think when the final product came out over there in Service, it ended up being roughly a three-million-dollar project. But the biggest thing is you gotta look at your drainage, you gotta look at your isolation areas. You have dogs that you never wanna have out in public or be seen in public. They need to be in a quarantine area. Those are probably animals that you're gonna put down relatively fast, because either their aggressiveness or the fact that, um, there's severe health issues with them. That facility out there is not designed for any of that. It's designed that you take Fluffy out there, you drop Fluffy off, you go on your vacation, you come back, you fly into Tucson late in the afternoon, you jump in your car, and you run out to the facility, you pick Fluffy up, and you go home. A shelter is basically a hardened area, and, and you gotta be able to have those cats separated. You gotta have that quarantine areas, uh, during certain, when you're first bringing them in to, to look for parvo and other diseases. You gotta have that harden area for the insane animals, if you wanna call them them, that, uh, you, 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 that have no business floating around in society, because they're gonna bite people and, uh, what have you. That facility is not, just not a good facility. We, we need to go forward with, with what the county's intent, uh, on building up another shelter. It would be nice to have another shelter, a, a county, uh, or somebody have a nice shelter up there in the Benson area, that, that, uh, could also work out up in that region too. But right now, uh, it's, it's really Douglas and, and Wilcox. And, uh, we went up, Commander Bradshaw and I went up a few years back up and looked at the Wilcox facility. And, uh, the animal control officer up there at that time was complaining. I went up there and I walked in that facility, and I went, you've gotta be kidding me. Now, the inside was trashed. The panels needed to be, uh, they needed more, the, the whole place was just trash, in my opinion. And, uh, I talked to Ruben, and Ruben was in charge of facilities, it's time. We went up and we looked at that facility, I said, Ruben, look at this, this needs a rehab, and he did. County really stepped up the plate, did a super rehab on that, added more concrete, uh, for walkways, for the runs, for the animals and everything, and really cleaned up the inside and redid the roof. Yeah, and, uh, it's, I was very happy with that. Uh, I've never been to the Douglas facility, uh, but I'm sure, uh, everything I hear from our animal control officers, they're, they're satisfied with the service in the fact that, you know, Douglas is, is good to them when they come in there. So.
So Wilcox doesn't have any place, and not necessarily pro or con for Wetstone or anywhere else, Wilcox doesn't have anywhere to quarantine animals. They don't, there's, there's no separation, there's one room for cats and one room for dogs, similar to the, the old Wetstone facility, to our, our Wichita City facility, um, just one big room. And, um, but anyway, yes, thank you for Wilcox, I wanted to say that. I appreciate your comment.
I also appreciate your frank comments, Mr. Lina.
Yes.
Any other questions for the sheriff? I think he's probably still online, waiting to see, to be grilled if necessary. Are you still there, Mark?
I am, man, thank you. Any questions for me? And while you're thinking of a question, I would just say, thank you, Tom, uh, for the presentation and the team to put that together, and Rich Carwash, and you and your team for the support and, uh, partnership in that. But, uh, again, I, again, the camera thing, I must wanna highlight that if I could for a minute, and that is, this, this thing from Acxiom threw us off, it threw us a huge curveball. Uh, and we're, I told the chief to go ahead and go back, we're gonna renegotiate this. Uh, sadly though, that's how they get you, but we're gonna keep fighting those numbers. That, that, we didn't expect that at all, till about a month ago, we got that, so my apologies on that.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Have all my discussions outside this, they're very specific.
Well, today's for getting us information, so, um, we can put it all together at some point in time in the future and sort of, um, and sort of weigh and manage what we can, what we can allow for each department. If there are no other questions, comment, okay. This work session is over.